This meeting will come to an end when the Council is closed.
Councilwoman Curtis Dastin.
Here.
Councilwoman Hudson.
Here.
Councilwoman Jackis.
Here.
Councilwoman Corvall.
Here.
Councilwoman Keeney.
Here.
Councilwoman Sedgley.
Here.
Councilwoman Bolton.
Hi, I'm here.
Councilwoman Hudson.
Here.
President of the House.
Here.
Please stand before the prayer of the Republicans, like by Councilwoman Keeney.
Oh my God, as we lay this day in our community, may it show him sense of justice and fair conduct all we do. Above all, may you seek out the Holy Spirit, give us the strength of the Father, regardless of the language of the Scripture.
My country, my people, this is the United States of America, and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a reading of the City Council's Incorporated and Annual Meeting's Notice of 2012, which was filed on the City Council's office and posted on the bulletin board on December 27, 2011, and sent to the Senate and Home Police Tribune in compliance with the provisions of the Open Committee's Law of New Jersey. I will not hold the public speaking force to me. Any resident that has taken a question to the President and Councilman who saw this time. Please state your name and address for the matter.
Hi, my name is Jeffrey Lee, and property owner of Newark Avenue on the corner of Newark and North Avenue. If I look familiar or if I've testified before anything before and been up in front of you before, maybe you've been on the chamber of Congress before. And I'm here to talk to you today about something I've seen before you probably in the next two weeks to six weeks, that has to do with the Rand redevelopment plan, which is a redevelopment plan for the 400 brake facility of Perry Biscuit, as some of you know, as it's in passing this annual order. Just to give you a little context, I was once a partner in that redevelopment and worked tirelessly with the Council to work on it and put together a real collaborative plan for that area, which I knew was a reserved area that needed redevelopment. What I, and I'm obviously saying it before you as a developer, so I'm a co-developer and I feel this begins development, not current, but more than anything, I'm for responsible development and I'm particularly for the Council and the city not missing an opportunity to do something great within their city. That's something that I envisioned with you in a public-private partnership going back maybe 12 years ago or 15 years ago, when we first redeveloped the corner of Newark and North to be a new stop shop supermarket, which was a normal manufacturing facility that had environmental, it was one down, and we really worked together to come up with a plan, including getting split blocks of all different sizes and making it beautiful as you entered the North Avenue, being way to the city, to ensure that it was something different. We did with EDC money, so it was a real public-private partnership, and then continuing from there, we, I produced plans to develop the Kage Way Road, where Academy happened, and so there's a lot of great things happening in the area. And I'll tell you, what, the only concern I have is whether what's gonna happen to this redevelopment area is not ordered down for whatever one issue we have ahead. We talked about it years ago, the New York City, you know, wanting something to really activate that area. We talked about misuse, which really plays on all the reactives of that area. You have a transit stop there, trains are oriented to development, you've got a park within walking distance of that area to play off and be a complement to residential there. And you have really, that is the kind of leaning area that leads into the Newark Avenue border, so it's kind of fulminizing. That's kind of your entrance into the city. I think that a plan presented was just a big box retail. In fact, one of the plans that I first talked about with Council on the city, we were sensitive to the big box because we didn't want to cause any disruption to downtown. It was actually a lot of collaboration between us and the city in that plan to make sure that any large retail would complement to the existing retail, whether it be the stop shop that's on the corner or the retailers that are downtown Elizabeth, that we want to make sure together, right, if we're turning away, because when we think about an area, you need to rebuild on a plan, you want to be able to do something that makes a difference in your city. So I talked about, you know, that the Rand, that old Rand Old Trafford, they were having a special place in Elizabeth. And I always thought that it could be another special place in Elizabeth with real active streets, violence, and something that happened with the misuse of residential, small retail, large retail, as well as small components. And I think the market is there. Unfortunately, for me, I'm not, just to be clear, I'm not a partner in that deal anymore. I have no, you know, financial gain in that deal, but I am, you know, I'm not a resident of Elizabeth, but I feel like a part of Elizabeth because I've been here over 15 years, as a, you know, as a tax paying party and a part of Congress of the city. I think the market is there for the misuse. I think the residential market is as hot as ever, especially for rental, and I think trains are oriented. There's a couple of dollars available for that. I think small retailers are getting back in the game, and I think there is probably some larger loss. I just asked the Council this time before to get serious consideration and question the developer. I saw that the developer had been willing to collaborate and have a purpose of newer to their current parcel, as well as their parcel. I just look at the city having an opportunity to not leave anything on the table. I think to just have a retail component with some wishes to residential down the road, I think we'd be missing this chance to do something special for Elizabeth. So it's nothing for you today, I know this is a council, but I did want to hear, but I have to say, I think the projects here in New York, many wanted to set success, so I want the city of Elizabeth to see what's happening there transformed. You know, Councilman Sedgley, you know, he's done a lot for that, for that board, including he and I spoke at the time, you know, it was a special place for community centers that happens with the development. Just, you know, I'll be back before you, if you can call me, if you want to get any ideas. I do a lot of redevelopment, land redevelopment across the country for places, you know, like Detroit and Seattle. So I've got a lot of ideas and I just, I want you to gather all the data. I don't want you to use that property to make a difference that's going to get rid of Elizabeth, and I bet you.
Thanks, thank you. Any other taxpayer or resident who should address the City Council who saw this time?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jose Barreja for the 618 Jackson Avenue. We're gonna have a very important election in two weeks, November 6th, along with the president and many other choices that our residents will have. I believe the most important election will be all the way to the bottom, which is the school board. The most important education is not only to Elizabeth, but to our state and to our country. And it's gonna be very important, I believe our citizens should make a choice to move forward and to enter option in our school board. I believe that our schools have great staff, great students, and even though there are accidents, small meetings in the school system, I truly believe we can do so much more and so much better. So I just want to remind our citizens that you have an important election and to remember to vote for the school board all the way to the bottom. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other taxpayer or resident who should address the City Council who saw this time?
Hello, my name is Maria Chalina, I live at the 81st West Gilbert Avenue. And I came before you, you know, my house is on Proplex, but let me tell you a little bit about this weekend. I did autism walk in the verification room. On Sunday, one out of every 34 boys are diagnosed with autism, with autism spectrum disorder. Autism gets less than 5% of funds for research. More children are diagnosed with autism when the child has cancer, AIDS, and diabetes put together. Now, trying to work on the solution, programs, examples, the superhero therapy group, art therapy, nutrition, training for parents, online, five day program analysis, and for schools for autism. Thank you.
Thank you.
I keep my name and number to her.
Okay, you're listening.
Or someone else can go back to my number.
Okay, we'll follow with that. I'm gonna tell you, I saw that New Jersey autism is a very big problem in the state for some reason. We have open a number of, you know, people with a diagnosis for autism. It certainly needs some more attention. Any other taxpayer or resident who should address the City Council who saw this time?
Mary Mahoney, 3211, New Jersey. I just want to reiterate what we have, posting my treatment, you know, Charlie, maybe we don't, maybe this one is for our education. But we really need a scam of mine now, with all this corruption that's been exposed. But on one point, it's a surprise that I hear anything from the city, maybe Councilor, the Secretary, this call, concerning the process going on with the education, need to change it. Our children definitely suffer, especially our black children, definitely being left alone. I don't wanna go too far into that right now, but I'm up here, I first want to thank Councilman Corvall, Councilwoman Warren Burke, Councilwoman Sedgley, for all the help you've given, the residents that go back for applause, and school, and kids. And, but a lot has been done, the new, the new people you have, which are so shorty, and maybe they're gonna hold the job, you're doing all that they can, they're working furiously, but the filters might be a little passive, like you know, you know, but they're working hard, they're hiring, giving guys second chances, and they're working hard, and I want to thank Councilman Corvall for that. However, I believe more can be done in the way of virtually vouchers to section eight so that residents can move on. I mean, they give a little, a little notice to move out, find a place. Many residents are coming, cities just won't have enough time to find a place, especially when they have to come back a year. Many of them don't want to give to a one year list, they're saying they gotta come back a year. Let the people go, let them, let them have priority section eight, it can be done, a justice can be made, you know, fine. But it's a serious situation, also, City Council. The police are terrible, we met with the director, he know what he's gonna do, but he can't keep. And when you got a bunch of police, that's what you got. Police, you can not lie to me, that's what you got. And they all sit over there, no good enough that's going on, shooting downtown, you got one of the cops go back for applause, and they got their office crying, and everything, that's what made them upset. I mean, it's like, it's an experience, well, seeing how much pressure and repression that is you can take over here, and all the violence that's happening for them. So we bring this to you so we know, like, I have a thing that Council people want to try to help. You really appreciate it because we know you guys are super hard towards this situation. But I'd like to say this for the city. Councilman Goldman, Councilman Nelson, if you think it's a joke or that these people are not important enough for you to help, it may be your time, that's fast. Maybe you have lost sight of why you're doing it right now. You know, maybe you just tore off the understanding time, maybe you should be sorry. But there's nobody's gonna be easy that's gonna help the people, thank you.
Any other taxpayer or resident who should address the City Council who saw this time? Any other taxpayer or resident who should address the City Council who saw this time?
Regina, former resident of 400 Irvington Avenue, currently into Tony Parker Road. I just want to talk about the conversion vouchers, and I appreciate the letter that I wrote to the city committee. How can families receive a conversion voucher? If a family lives in a public housing union that's scheduled to be demolished, disposed, or of convert, they will be contacted by the public housing agency when they are available for conversion vouchers. Family union vouchers that are affected by the home's decision to opt out of a section eight project-based contract or by decisions of the home to prepay the mortgage will be notified by the home to contact P H A, Public Housing Agency. The home, if the home is opting out of section eight project-based contract, people can prepay an issue of issue one mortgage or subject to enforcement action, what goes for owner by other. I understand that you go with the government, Chris Christie, but I don't know if you can see if you can reach out to C I S management because 400 is going down, ours was moved to the back. Now, thank you for not being told to the residents of Woodland's but. Now, I don't know if she is prepaying the mortgage up there, but I also know that there is a mortgage crisis with the project, Public Housing. Whereas though I don't know if old Woodland is under that expiration date, I'm not sure. But it's so, if she can get, maybe there was 60 units and, if she can get 60 conversion vouchers for the tenants that was above the day. I don't believe, I don't make this fair for the former residents of 400 Irvington Avenue to be supposed to go to the back and then stay back there. I don't think it's fair. And New Jersey has a fine age mortgage agency, where that's why the companies are being able to do, do that money as that's high for Irvington Avenue and as well as our road. People are suffering up there. This is the stress, and I believe something has to be done, you know? And if we don't go to support it, if we don't fix this again, catapult people, how are we supposed to go about for what? It's like most of the storm, you be trying to figure your way out for what? And everybody, yeah, it's cases, look at what so much they're gonna give. We don't want to suffer suffering. And, you know, I can emotional, just a lot that I've lived with through this process. You know, I was, I was supposed to go to the back, 350 and 380 are giving options. To all the property and go, you know, there's gonna be a real potential, they come back. But what about those people that said 400, what about those who have just been, this is the policy right now? You know, the truth is we have to love it, we don't know. And what they need is reality and not fantasy. Thank you and have a good night.
Regina, Regina, sorry, I forgot her name.
Regina.
Regina, is your last name?
My first name is Regina Ziziz.
Oh, okay. All right, hopefully, maybe we'll be able to clarify for us, I think we're a little wrong. Basically, we're a little wrong. Any other taxpayer or resident who should address the City Council who saw this time? Once again, any other taxpayer or resident who should address the City Council who saw this time?
Any, my name is Edward Morris, comes out from 67 East 11th and Roosevelt.
Me.
Did you say Edward Morris?
Actually, I'm Zachary. Okay, I mean, you know, it's like, almost like, just to be definite, you know what I'm saying? I just want to know, you know, I showed you Council's, I have, you know, riots, I mean, just minutes ago, you know, rioting, you know, shots, like I said, you know, police, you know, presence as, as the night of the war, you know, it's just, it's just like, to basically just harass or press people, you know, and to make it, it's tiresome, you know, it's sick, and outright ridiculous, you know, challenges ridiculous, first of all. Outside that, you know, like you said, community condition, you know, the MP here, you know, that the government houses, the corporate houses, you know, did nothing, did nothing for the opportunity, like, and they don't look, you know, it's like, real sadly, you want to move out here and ask that. You know, but outside that, I just want to know, at what point, you know, I'm going to see any type of real, you know, change? You know, it's like I said, if one thing's changed, the other's been saying. You know, I don't like the whole, you know, the word of questioning, nobody's saying my face, you know, but this is the reality of it. You know, with all these conditions being saying, I wanna be, you know, I mean, at what point, and, you know, we all been designed to be, that's really sick. You know, we all been designed to be, everywhere you get people here, you know, that just work with the right thing. You gotta keep, you know, the awful, like I say, you know, there's a lot of talking going on, you know, I'm listening to everybody. You know, we talk about, what's like the relevant, redeveloped, corruption, and all of that, you know? And when you think about it, you know, it's sad, and, you know, that's what the police department and most authority figures and so-called powers are being by, you know, putting bodyguards, marksmen, liar, and that's what you just expect people to, you know, embrace, or never just, you know, live in the filter as well. It's sad, I don't understand that, but it's like, we all be the role of the bank, but at what point is any type of change going to take place? You know, don't just, you know, just, you know, I mean, that's not something anybody, I mean, I mean, it's like, this means a fruit's entirety. There's fruit and tides, that what's supposed to, any, any, you know, relief going on? Can anybody on this panel, or commit, help me with that, anybody?
We could have asked that question, or we could have asked it by now, and we're trying our best to begin.
We're trying our best if we can.
So.
Was it that, you know, it's like, it's just something to be seen, again, it's like, it's like, almost like a record, it's like, just a fair answer, I don't understand it. I mean, with all the thurds you had, that's all the, we're trying our best to begin. That's all we've done. I mean, you gave all this money for yourself, that we're trying our best to begin. But anybody said, if this trophy is for us, for the best lady that spoke about, and why she can't get a decent half? You still trying our best to begin?
Yep.
Anything else to say?
There's a lot going on, I mean, this is gonna be, you know, just fun, just the police here, I mean, what's the purpose of going on? It's like, it's all a matter of, I'll ask you, you know, because that's what the conversation is about, you know? Two parties, you know, conversational, you know, interacting with each other, and if others are gonna get a look, you know, like, if this unit decides to send a ball, it's like, what's the purpose of going on about?
You have anything else to say, sir? There's a five minute, um.
They got a word, and, and other people got a lot of words, I'm not even too far, but because obviously, you don't have anything else to say, so I just wanted to leave, I'm just, thank you.
Regina.
Regina.
One grand, Parker Road, 230 J.
What's that, sorry?
Yeah, one grand, 230 Parker Road, 2J. I was up here a couple of weeks, and I liked the doors, but I'm still wondering, who are you gonna move all that thurds in the vestas? Out, out the way, this offline. I pulled it back and I said, this stuff is, is well, that's well, the day I found my apartment, you know, number one, that's what I'm wondering, when are they gonna move that out, number one? Number two, I really go back, and I'm in church, and a senior comes to me crying, and she is 97 years old, because she don't know where she's gonna move. She listened to 350, they were telling her that she might have to move to Detroit, perfect, I'm like, I'm a new person. Who in the world they think they are, that they could just carry people, and most of my 97 years old, I remember my family's here, my daughter's here, and all these people, yeah, they move, but they are, I think you guys, I'm here to vote, but now we can guys, you know, we can. And there is nothing to make it, but it's still not, it's my way, now waiting up, but we have been moved, I've been up there seven months, next month we're eighteen, now we're, we have been moved for eight months. And that's why when I move down the corner, they try to move on the pole pole, because I'm little, they told me, but they're not moving on, we had to move, and I said, no, I don't. I had moved anyway, and I'm on my second floor. So now when I air, I was second floor, because I have a bear, I have two horses, and I cannot walk up four places stairs. You know, we get, you know, there's time, time, and limits, you know? But I'm just like, I don't know, when are you gonna move all this thurds out, maybe we can down my own road? You know, it's crazy, I wonder.
Yeah, we're looking at you for about that, as well as your elevator, so specific concerns like that, we are sending them forward to the city so they can follow with that, right? Any other taxpayer or resident who should address the City Council who saw this time? Any other taxpayer or resident who should address the City Council who saw this time? Seeing them, I hope to all the people who are still here. Okay, as some of you may know, I have requested that the administration sends some of the directors here to answer some of the questions and concerns that you and as well as many of us had in terms of what's going on with the plaza, particularly with inspectors and that. But I also, I have a house in the city of Elizabeth, and they are here to see, I see you two representatives, so if you come up at this time? Thank you.
Paying the initiative here, uh, letting, as I say, hi to all the council people here, uh.
I'm sorry, before we move on, who are you?
My name is Julia, I'm the Director of the Houston Housing Authority.
Okay.
Captain, I'm the Deputy Director of the Houston Housing Authority. We are aware of the common difficulty plaza, we are aware of the concern of the residents. He experienced the same situation, he did, I know, to the board there, you know, one of the ten years ago, you know, nine states, difficulty living in that type of situation. Uh, Houston, we do have some involved with the plaza, but like, everybody needs to be mindful, we are not owners of the building, so we do not hold for the plaza. There are some things said tonight, which you may be very fractured, particularly about some residents receiving a section eight voucher, and we don't even know about. So I would take some of the things, you know, that we have done, for instance, some of the, we'll be doing, you know, to try and move this plaza along. We do have the first actual move in common, there's a partnership between parent developer only, and the housing authority. So we have set aside some space for a lot of money, you know, to build the first new building. And that will be a nice building, great plans, it doesn't, it doesn't address the need and impressive needs of residents that are living there under the current situation. We did make a attempt, a few tests, to receive a large space, they didn't grant, from the Mr. Parker House and Development, that was not successful, that would have helped, uh, what plaza and our situation, we didn't have a turn, that a lot of success have seen, and particularly for, uh, relationship with the board of board of education, so, maybe that's where I'm at the future. So we, right now, we do not have any additional funding for to do any new moving ahead partnerships. Everybody is gonna say, the residents, as well as council, we really don't have, you know, whether we're available with section eight vouchers to assist in, you know, getting some of the residents out of the plaza. Did I leave this, uh, the Home Director at Hill of Friday to discuss this? Not that it means anything, 200, the year 2013 is opt out year for section eight voucher program at the plaza, and that may create a better atmosphere for conditions for some of the residents, and very be able to take advantage of conversion to project-based voucher to, to the natural. for some of the residents, probably be able to take advantage of conversion to, from project-based voucher to, to the natural.
Erica, when you say opt-out year, what is that?
Well, the, uh, the, the actual project-based voucher, the street number sixty, the fourth three hundred and sixty, and the plaza, the owner of that building, correctly, uh, the owner of that building, came to opt out of, of the section eight voucher.
Term on project-based contract.
Please come to my question, of course, in all this scenario.
The term on project-based contract will expire by the end of 2013, I'm not sure which time. At which time, the owner can opt out of the project-based section eight program, and request the HUD, that those project-based vouchers be converted to tenant-based vouchers. At which time, in HUD, federal HUD, the field office in Washington, authorize X number, random amount of vouchers to appropriate families in need of moving out. Uh, and that's what six was referred to before, that was opt-out clause, uh, the owner developer of whatever project was involved. Uh, now, the owner can opt to stay in the project-based voucher, they can continue to open up a new contract, or they can opt out, at which time, that convert project-based voucher to a tenant-based voucher. But again, that's 2013, we're almost there, but between that and then, it can be a long time for people who are living in, you know, some great conditions.
Okay, so all be clear, they decide to opt out, and the residents will then be able to take their section eight and move it around to someone else?
They should be able to, if the HUD, federal HUD offices authorize more money to convert those project-based vouchers, because the whole housing authority, mainly us, the municipal housing authority, we have no new funding, and we are at budget capacity now for the dis holders that would have a program, and that's part of the problem. Some of the residents that have been able, are on my waiting list, I have over three thousand names on my section eight waiting list. I may never get to some of those families, just because there is so little funding in section eight program. Over this past summer, it was twenty percent, and then straight cut to the section eight program. These cuts, you know, subsidy, and our admin fees, and things like that, all affect the number of people that we concern. And in addition to that, uh, like I said, there are families that are on our list from the wood, that are on the section eight waiting list, that are on my public housing waiting list, for seniors who are on that. Uh, if I could get to them, that would be great, but I can't bring them in ahead of everybody else, because that's not fair for the other people that are on the waiting list. So we did just open up, in March of 2012, I opened up the waiting list for both families and the seniors. So hopefully, some residents that openly seized upon the opportunity to sign up, as fast as I can, it seems I don't go through that, that, that list, that waiting list. But I have that eight of the families on my family waiting list, and that, the senior list is changing every, every day, because that list never closes, because that's what it all time. So if there are seniors that open, that want to sign up, they can sign up anytime, or they can order a contract, and that application.
So can I speak clear, I'm interested in what the president is saying.
This is not a problem, thank you.
The what, thank you.
Okay, uh, the proper speaking session is over, um, okay, would you continue with your presentation?
Um, well, well, that's, yeah, yeah, one thing, um, I, I see, it seems to me that there is, you, somebody's got to have a meaning, where all the parties, that some of this value to them, to the gentleman's point, you know, he, he, he's a, he's a role, he's, he's been doing new. And, you know, we may need to, yes, we're seven, I mean, you know, we didn't want to say, you know, I, I, I can do, sometimes, sometimes it's all the plaza, it's a table, or, you know, with that nice discussion, uh, I don't, I don't know what they're doing, so, you know, we can do, we can do, but I don't, I don't think there's enough, uh, really, 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 to sit there, you know, sitting there, I mean, and, you know, I think maybe, you know, President Biden, he may want to have a session, but we're not, you know, maybe we can advance, you know, make some progress. There will be some changes coming up, but it doesn't, it doesn't satisfy any president that has any existing situation or condition, they are got that, the things hardly change. But I think, if we make a clearer rule, it's going to be better than staying, and it works on, you know, all kinds of discussions on this, I think, uh, Ms. Biden's intention is best. She would move and accept people on this section eight waiting list, having the plaza, I don't know how he's going to do, but keep in mind, you did the second round of that. Well, we're ready to, the models, finally, going to the board there, we got a hundred and eighty, ready for section eight voucher. If you use a new people, we will out the contract, and it's only ever, they can opt, they can get a voucher, and take it forever, or take it for a year and come back. We don't have, we have no section eight, so it's everybody, it is for a mistake. I, I mean, said, you know, it doesn't necessarily, you know, lead into, you know, the resident side of people who's building, but, you know, we do understand, uh, it is a work for progress, we can continue, you know, try to find answers, to be said, that, that we can, the housing authority, but, but everybody does understand, you know, the rules on that, any questions?
So, once again, the federal housing authority would have to approve any change in that project-based voucher. And there's no way the housing authority, this housing authority can assume such an over, over plaza.
I don't, I guess, I guess, I guess, in the opt-out, we expedite, yeah, and, 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 because, opt-out, we're not going to expedite, because in opt-out, it's before, in another office, which might have been open, the office, the window here, you know, was another one, but it's, and, but we are saying, maybe, those people, maybe eighty months, you know, and, you know, they're just not going to be solving the opt-out, if they want a little better, because we get to that opt-out, going to 2013, I'm sure that's where everybody will be excited about. I understand, to, to, I can go to the board and say, hey, then we have those, whatever, the houses left, and that can take all the people out of the plaza, and they, they'll take the service. If I had new section eight authority, we could assist people in finding homes, and anything we can do with the section eight voucher, don't worry, I said, right? This is the way I look, there's project-based buildings, there are project-based section eight buildings, like in 1986, there was a section eight voucher attached to each individual apartment, you know, so if you're building a apartment, you can take advantage of the voucher, if you do not build a new apartment, the voucher stays with the building, and not with the person. All of our houses, we have houses belonging, belong to the person, and that person has to take it, and move it around, it's different types, that's the problem.
Okay, I'd like to open up to my colleagues, that I have any questions? Any council members have any questions, councilmen?
I have, uh, that's it, I have something to do, uh, to what's happening with this particular situation, Mr. President. I know every item, and there are three counties that the gentleman mentioned before, Many Rover, Sedalia, Perkins, yeah, three of, two are large, eventually are large, and then the other one is the board council, which is actually the leaders of that particular area, that try their best, you know, to forward the information to the proper target. You try your best as the president, and the senator, to make sure that if there is a water leak, the board have helped, who know about it. Mr. Grover mentioned the first night, to all the members of the president, and apparently, the senator will almost come in back every week, every week, and Mr. Grover mentioned, you have to stop firing lawsuit against the landlord, the city, and we explained to them once before, this is a private property, as Mr. Johnson mentioned tonight, has nothing to do with the city, has nothing to do with the housing authority, any failure from the landlord, complaint must go to the agency, and you also stress that, Mr. President. But yeah, but yeah.
Who matters, please?
Uh, I've been getting accused, you know, I resent, when somebody speaks against somebody, without having the proper facts, without having the proper knowledge. You come to my chamber, I represent the city, you have no right to offend my city, that you come from another town, and only live in Elizabeth for two days. And what I said, and the councilman, from the fourth ward, or fifth ward, I recall, you know, we have so much progress going on in the city of Elizabeth. We work so hard to betterment our people, whether it's the school, whether it's the city, whether it's the housing, whether it's everything else. And yeah, somebody from other town comes and says bad things about the city. I didn't call anybody in different names, I didn't call you racist, and you have the audacity to come back again and say, mention my name, that I was the first councilman to say to those people that came, the first or second night, you deserve bad. And I also resent that, you come out there, get over and over, and talk against your police, that's wrong, our police are doing a fine job. If you have names, talk to your director, you have names, you want to direct it, hold on. Excuse me, I have the floor, I have the floor, we think it's not fair, it's a hard duty. I mentioned the fact, you are the one that is the one that's, you know, we have a police, they're doing a good job, you understand? We have, our police are doing a great job, and if you have a quarrel against any particular person, Mr. President, if you have a quarrel against a meeting director, Mr. President, I have the floor. And if you're complaining against any particular office, you should talk to the police director, or you can't be for students, you did, you mentioned it, the president called the police director, to the, to the chair of the president, we get things done, you expect us, every time you come to say, for you, yes, I do feel so, you do deserve bad, but there is a proper way to go, but not to accuse us of being racist. Look at yourself in the mirror before you say something else. Mr. President, I think this is important, that it gets cleared out, because you have three councilmen, they took time to build their project, we have time to vote the person, we question the individual people that are responsible, the individual people that are responsible. I am the sixth ward councilman, I'm very proud of my work, and I do anything to help if you need my help, but right now, let me tell you something, you're trying to give the help, but I enter time. And do you understand, there's nothing I can do for you?
Sorry, councilman. Council, you have to come by, I want to remember, excuse me, sorry, thank you, you are the one who got me. And you keep it up, I have a booth, so I'll escort you out, okay? Any other council member would like to ask a question of the housing authority, Mr. President? Councilman? Councilman?
Yes, sir, uh, I know, uh, I do, I can, uh, support the director, Jones, and that you know, you're, I know that, I mean, uh, nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-three, we're going to the home six development, we're converting my home to a more American housing than we had out there. It's a different economy, it's a different times, but then was resident, uh, the housing authority and federal HUD was willing to move in that direction, move and remove and eliminate, convert, uh, hybrid access to the townhouses. I know we had a lot of vouchers, we had a hundred, two hundred, two hundred fifty vouchers that came from Washington, to the president to spell that area, and folks took those vouchers, and that was about Caroline, and then the origin of two hundred, okay, because there were federal, unfortunately, while we are here, unfortunately, that situation was existed, uh, and you all think that we hope for, the residents can hope for, is that the end goal of 2013? When the number, if they, if they choose to comply for this opt-out council, that the HUD will approve, uh, we need to petition, uh, federal HUD that in Washington, residents should try their hands together, uh, make a petition down to the federal representatives, or the senator, then the congressman, series, uh, where congress is paying, they're trying to pressure the federal HUD, that they will open the lock door, and give some vouchers to us, but specifically to the plaza. So, that seems to be what I'm hearing, is that right, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
So I'm hoping that the residents of San Diego, you know, you're...
Yeah, 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 I'm just, you know, I'm...
You're going to pressure the federal HUD.
I think, I think, to do that, I think, say, you know, it's, 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 I don't know, it's, it's, talk with the council. But I think, before I talk on this, when you did, you know, was a very professional manner, and I think, it does stop, where the attitude, people that are really pretending, people that are being effective, you know, talking to people, so, so I hope that was a good thing. I mean, you, I'm not going to ask anybody, if there's a plaza that has patience, but I consider, it's going to happen, but it's going to take some time, I understand, you know? Do not have patience with the situation, but, but I believe, people have, if you sit, you know, for any school right now, she has, she personally, she does not want to go to the, any condition that is annual. But it is more than her true wishes, that she is sat around with me, yeah, and I ask the residents, show patience, I'm just presenting the facts, the factual size, okay? Until time, it's, you know, some of the problems, we're going to continue to have this, this gap, and some of this, you know, like, you know, level of business made in this trust, you know, but, I'm waiting to vote over, the residents, hopefully, I can go to this meeting, six months from now, and we'll be a new residents' agency.
Any other council member, like, that's the council jacks?
President, yeah, I have a question, um, Mr. Jones, you said something very interesting to me, and, and the light bulb went off in, in my head, and I know the people that come each council meeting, um, I, I, my heart bleeds for them, because I, I go ask them constantly, uh, being vice principal at school twenty-three for many years, I, I helped raise many of those children that live in that complex. And, um, I have to say to you, and ask you, can you please elaborate on how the Board of Education here in Elizabeth had something to do with the application being denied in Trenton?
Well, it was, I, I think, it was, it was a federal way, and it was a very competitive federal way. Uh, the fact that the relationship, now, I'm not, I'm fully by personal account, the fact that the relationship between the city of Elizabeth and the Board of Education, in this particular city, mitigated against a more successful consideration of that application. So there was cities that submitted that application, and I'm sure I still have a relationship between the city and the Board of Education, but that was, uh, a, a significant qualifier in the education, in that application, uh, just, yeah, okay? Uh, I believe, can, it's the choice they, can, and, not just that, planning it, okay, we submitted it to time, and they didn't get it, I can't tell you why they didn't get it, but, I'm sure those cities, they have the best relationship, uh, if you want to education, that's strong to the city.
Okay, I, I think that the residents here, that come here each week, and, and talk, and talk to us about the, the problems that you face each and every day, or have listened to Mr. Jones, the Elizabeth Board of Education had a major play in this application being denied. Now, as you come here, and you did not know this until tonight, now, as you come here, and I welcome you here each and every week, I think it's great that you come here, but now you need to go someplace else, and find out how actually the application was denied by the Board of Education.
Well, the Board of Education is not going to be able to answer the question, um, that application.
She may potentially be able to take some from the project base out to convert them and save some for the sites that she didn't continue to rebuild. What's the other question?
It just went officially up since 2013, what happens afterwards if they do not have that one of hers?
That I don't think it ever should happen. And in this climate, in the climate of, unfortunately, being enabled, that's the fact that it does happen. Right now HUD is operating and the whole House of Representatives are operating on a continuing resolution that will go through the end of March. A continuing resolution funds us at all last year's rates subsidy and public spending. Once the end of March comes, we don't believe that's going to happen. There is legislation now called sequestration, it will come by with that, which potentially reduces our subsidy and reduces the section eight funds by initially six to seven percent. So we're already being underfunded tremendously at the House of Representatives and again, at the project base structures as well. But we're not looking, it doesn't actually matter who gets in office, whether it's President Obama or Romney, but this sequestration regulation, if this does in fact happen and it doesn't overturn, there will be far-reaching housing implications. And really, it's across the board, they're saying each house is going to be drastically impacted everywhere, in every department, whether it's HUD, whether it's transportation, whether it's the architecture, it's everywhere. So it is going, 2013 is going to be an extremely difficult year. This isn't going to be a better yet, no matter who gets in office.
Thank you. Mr. President, I just want to personally thank you for inviting House of Representatives here. I do want to request if the owners of Opa Plaza will be able to come back and just, I know that they, she was here, but at that meeting, a lot of the members, the residents of Opa Plaza, they weren't present. It's getting really important that there's clear communication for all the residents on what is exactly happening. Because I think that's one of the biggest issues that the residents have experienced, is just the fact that communication was very non-existent. And I feel as though they're not supposed to be in any way shaped or form, Kevin and Dar. So even with those statements that you mentioned, even now, I just think it's important for the residents to really know clearly what's the intentions of the owners. Thank you.
Okay, Congressman, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, this is my question. Yeah, Mr. President, I think it really matters who wins the election, even though there are items that are going to be cut out of the HUD budget across the board. Right, of course, I mean, in all governmental federal agencies, it definitely is extremely known to matter who wins the election in two weeks from today. Secondly, my issue is that, come April, if there's some maneuvering with these section eight certificates, whether it be project based or if they're ten based and if they're cut, what is going to happen to those residents who suffer with this situation? And then they'll be cut out of maybe section eight, maybe subsidized housing? That's, that would be the real, you know, that would just be the real sin. There's already enough sin in this situation. But that would be like a double sin on these residents who are trying to stick it out, trying to work with this process. And then come April, according to what you just said, if things are being cut, some of those residents may still lose after going through all of this hell, all this period. And then they'll be dealt with the fact that HUD is still going to come. So that's why we need to rally right now, like what they're doing now, so that that doesn't happen come in April. April will be here, but it's too far away from what they're dealing with in the present time.
Yeah, I think, I think any existing resident that is receiving, at least for now, this group of residents, will not be cut out. Whether they have to stay or whether they get to tip about to go forward. The problem is with the House of Representatives, Section Eight program. There is legislation on the books that has been sent in the House, which does for a cut, additional classes to English. Certain death levels are not good, so the only way not to have in the living room, they have to send in the House, have to go back and do a road change. That was the point. I think that, either by laying, I think you're right to, 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 to President as always, to answer some of Congressman's questions, particularly this language question. I think that, you know, going forward, you know, I think you see that the existing project based vouchers on the books. I don't think the idea is that the three hundred minutes was all finished. So I think the idea is to convert some of the existing project based vouchers into, you know, a regular voucher, a portable voucher. But I'm, let me say that, I was, because now the person who's back to you, and that may help answer this language question.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
But I think, to the Councilmore, I think, I might do a principal, because I don't, I don't want to happen, like if, we understand that we do a principal, because that's sequestration hangs heavily over our head. Because the overall level is down significantly, it wasn't being recommended, it's already down to like eight percent of what it means. Section eight is being squeezed from administrative level. We manage our program pretty well, so I respect it by the U.S. voucher. But I might go first of all, set for the end of the future.
Any other questions? The Director? Well, I'd like to thank you, Director Jones, and the Director of Harvard for coming on this evening. I think it was very informative, and the information that you shared. Hopefully, the residents have a better idea about the voucher system and how it works and where it may be going. And I know it's frustrating for everybody, and it's emotional for the residents. I mean, I've been there and, you know, I see what they live through, what they go through each and every day. You know, and it's frustrating for you, I realize that. It's people that's frustrated for us because we want to do so much more. And unfortunately, like Congressman Mazzini did, our hands are tied. So what I can do is, what I'm doing now is inviting, like the House of Representatives. I'm hopeful that next month, the administration will send some of these directors here to meet with us and we can ask some of the same questions and get some information from them as well. So that this way, the residents hopefully will have more information as well. Even though I see most of the residents have left. You know, for those of you that are here, I mean, it's important to understand what they said here in terms of the petitions that residents need to make. But I think, Councilor communicated about petitions and Federal HUD about this. Okay, now, I think you need to start with C.I.N.S. And petitioning them, they opt out in April of 2013. So, and then we have to hope that then the Federal HUD will approve, you know, so. But also, we talked about contacting your federal representatives, which is very important, state representatives. You talked about, again, hiring, maybe getting a term to help navigate for you, if your ship was full. You know, I said that before and said it several times, right? You know, we are doing everything that we can for you. You know, I know right now it's not helping you because you're going to go through this process, you have to see that dirt there. You have to deal with the broken elevators and the leaks and the holes and all sorts of things, you know? And, you know, we feel for you, we definitely do, you know? But it's not easy, it's difficult, it's a complicated situation. You know, but just hopeful that as time goes on, it is getting, asking for some residents that there's some things happening. It's not great, you know, but there are some small gains that are happening, so I'm hopeful that that will change. Okay, we will now move on to public hearings. President, do we take five minutes? Excuse me? Take five minutes? Okay, yeah, we can take five minutes, however you say.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Here.
Councilwoman Wester. Councilwoman Jacobs.
Here.
Councilwoman Rowland.
Here.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Here.
Councilwoman Stenham.
Here.
Councilwoman Holden.
Here.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Here.
President Gonzalez.
Here.
And now move on to public hearings.
Orders number 4333, authorize the execution of lease agreement with Parkland County City of Elizabeth for continued use at Wall Street Parking Facility located at West Grant Street, New York Street, for a minimum term of five years and a fee of $1 per year.
You heard the reading, orders number 4333. Is there anyone, President, who would like to address Speaker, Orders Number 4333? Once again, you heard the reading, Orders Number 4333. Is there anyone who would like to speak at Orders Number 4333? Seeing, I call for public hearing, Orders Number 4333. Public hearing regarding Orders Number 4334 has been canceled.
Orders Number 43.
With the acceptance of my colleagues, I will discuss the reading, efficient communications, and reports of city officers, and move on to Orders on First Street.
Orders Number 4335, made by the Department of Environmental and Salting Services for New Jersey, providing $2,200,000 on a group install Brian Hill, specifically to increase the amount of the bond and additional one million four hundred thousand dollars.
You heard the reading, Orders Number 4335, what is your pleasure?
Move your input, President.
Move the second amendment. Are there any comments? Seeing number local.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty. Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Holden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye. Orders passed on First Street.
Orders Number 4336, granting the sequestration permit to Atlantic Environmental and Salting Services for New Jersey, to install one temporary soil corner in the public driveway of 508 Broadway.
You heard the reading, Orders Number 4336, what is your pleasure?
Move your input, President.
Move the second amendment. Are there any comments? Seeing number local.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Holden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye. Orders passed on First Street.
Orders Number 4337, authorize the establishment of personalized handicap parking space for City of Manhattan, 560 or Jefferson Avenue.
You heard the reading, Orders Number 4337, what is your pleasure?
Move your input, President.
Move the second amendment. Are there any comments? Seeing number local.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Holden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye. Orders passed on First Street.
Orders Number 4338, authorize the establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Jeremy and Eve Fuentes, 90 R Marshall Street.
You heard the reading, Orders Number 4338, what is your pleasure?
Move your input, President.
Move the second amendment. Are there any comments? Seeing number local.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Holden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye. Orders passed on First Street.
Orders Number 4339, authorize the establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Harold and Mose Lee by 50th Avenue.
You heard the reading, Orders Number 4339, what is your pleasure?
Move your input, President.
Move the second amendment. Are there any comments? Seeing number local.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Holden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye. Orders passed on First Street.
Orders Number 4340, authorize the establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Daniel and Bravo, 721 Locky End Street.
You heard the reading, Orders Number 4341, what is your pleasure?
Move your input, President.
Move the second amendment. Are there any comments? Seeing number local.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Holden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye. Orders passed on First Street.
Orders Number 4341, seeing Orders Number 4349, adopted February 28, 2003, which authorize the establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Laura Fernandez, 1901 C Place.
You heard the reading, baby. Okay, you heard the reading, Orders Number 4341, what is your pleasure?
Move your input, President.
Move the second amendment. Are there any comments? Local.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Holden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye. Orders passed on First Street.
Orders Number 4342, rescinding Orders Number 3969, adopted May 9, 2003, which authorize the establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Louie and Jill L. Unitas, 1026 East Grant Street, to establish staying and reserved space.
You heard the reading, Orders Number 4342, what is your pleasure?
Move your input, President.
Move the second amendment. Are there any comments? Seeing number local.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs. Councilman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stenham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Holden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye. Orders passed on First Street.
Orders Number 4343, an ordinance for man chapters 5.8.100, amendment 5.8.100, of Code of the City of Elizabeth entitled License Transferred Proximity to Existing License Prizes Exception.
You heard the reading, Orders Number 4343, what is your pleasure?
Move your input, President.
Move the second amendment. Are there any comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just while I read over the ordinance, I just wanted to make a friendly amendment where it says, whereas, the second whereas in the ordinance, it said, "Would your license of any kind may be transferred from place to place to a period of two years." I wanted to say place to place and or person to person.
I said it that emotionally, because in the body on the bottom, it says that too.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
In section two, it talks about applications, person to person, or place to place.
Okay, so we just want to make sure.
So, okay, in the interest of consistency, I guess we should.
That's actually correct, because the first part of section two refers to when you're waiting here, which is not on the where ads at all, you know? Where ads talks about the second clause of section two, which talks about the two-year restriction following place-to-place transfers.
And if it has to do with a place-to-place transfer, you're talking about changing it from one location to another, you're talking about extension to the 1,500-foot rule. So I don't know if the, the Councilor.
No, I just want to make sure so that it's not an ambiguity when it comes to the ordinance, somebody coming out every six months trying to transfer the license from person to person. The same thing that we talked about, gently setting.
I'm not sure that's actually what we did talk about. The two years that I, from my recollection of it, the two-year restriction was only for place-to-place transfers to preserve the integrity of the 1,500-foot provision.
No.
For person-to-person transfer, they wouldn't be moving place-to-place and no 1,500-foot provision would kick in.
No, no, I'm sorry, sir. What we talked about was in regards to how many times the licenses were being transferred, which is, we said we had a limitation under two years, but we also wanted to make sure that's, you know, uniform as it pertains to people as well.
There is restriction, since section two is one year. If you'd like to amend that to two years, that's something that your body can discuss amongst yourselves.
It's emotional, is it? Yeah, there is a second emotion.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Mr. President, Congressman Keenan, my recollection is that the matter was place-to-place, and someone doubled the amount of distance that they could move their premises. I do not want a person-to-person discussion, because in person-to-person, as Councils indicated, there's no access, there's no property involved. So the point being that they're slightly different, the concern is that we don't want somebody moving twice. That's one issue, but, correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor, that that doesn't apply to person-to-person transfers, is that clear?
That's correct.
Mr. President?
Yes, Congressman.
And so, for clarity, the issue for not allowing, or put a stipulation on the two-year transfer timeframe was not because of the actual, I guess, the actual distance, because we're doing away with that in this ordinance. The issue was to make sure that we're not creating some type of process where people are constantly turning over the applications and switching the legal license. That was the issue, not the distance.
Are there any comments? Seeing number local. Local on the amendment. On the friendly amendment, abandon annual person-to-person, right?
Yes.
Not on the order. Not on the order, it's right now, on the amendment. Local.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stenham.
Aye.
Councilman Holden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye. Okay, now, okay, now we need to hit a motion to adopt the ordinance as such. So, moved by Councilman Wester, seconded by Congressman Stenham. Any comments? Thank you. I just want to say, I certainly appreciate my colleagues' support. This ordinance being changed, I think it's going to be a good thing, for the city as a whole, as it will hopefully alleviate some of the problems that we have of the different bars, the liquor stores, in the residential areas, and allowing them to move beyond the 150-foot speed into a commercial industrial area, as well as allowing those that are in commercial areas and industrial areas to be able to move between those areas as well. I think it's a win-win for the businesses, I think it's a win for the residents of the city as well. Local.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stenham.
Aye.
Councilman Holden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye. Public hearing of further consideration of the foregoing ordinances shall take place at a city council meeting to be held Tuesday, November 13, 2012, at 3:00 p.m. We will now move on to Orders of Final Passage.
Orders Number 4334, authorize the execution of lease agreement with Parkland County City of Elizabeth for continued use as an Wall Street Parking Facility located at West Grant Street, New York Street, for a minimum term of five years and a fee of $1 per year.
You heard the reading, Orders Number 4333, what is your pleasure?
Move your input, President.
Move the second amendment. Are there any comments? Seeing number local.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stenham.
Aye.
Councilman Holden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye. Orders passed on Final Read. Any other, we have a motion to suspend.
I would like to, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilwoman Perkins Dusty. Second. Local.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stenham.
Aye.
Councilman Holden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
The letter, I have a letter dated October 18, 2012, from the Director of Community Development, requesting that you are on board to support the county community's funding application for the replacement of the South Front Street break-in.
You heard the reading of the resolution, what is your pleasure?
All the residents are on board.
Move the second amendment. Are there any comments? Mr. President, I just have to thank the administration, colleagues who supported this upgrade of the commission for over a year and a half now. And it really, really is affecting the ability for transit to go through, you know, keep their, so. Hopefully, county together, if only it was allowed, we could get any help, but we appreciate it, thank you. Thank you, also, I agree with you, you know, a lot of, second. Any other comments? Seeing number local.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stenham.
Aye.
Councilman Holden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye. Resolution passed. We will now move on to the residents.
Introducing improved fiscal year 2013 budget amendments to be ready for. The following constitute the fiscal year 2013 budget amendments. Operations excluded from cash reserve from $4,250,000 to $4,700,000. Hospital medical dental insurance from $1,420,000 to $970,000.
Public hearing to be held Tuesday afternoon at 3:00 p.m. on November 13, 2012.
Authorizing the fiscal year 2013 capital budget, ending down to $1,400,000.
You heard the reading of the resolution, what is your pleasure?
Move your input, President.
Move the second amendment. Are there any comments?
Mr. President, I just wanted to, this is for the bottom of the field, if it's correct. Oh, yes, correct.
Thank you. You can just double check, yes, as we're, thank you.
Yes, yes.
Yes, it is. Any other comments? Seeing number local.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stenham.
Aye.
Councilman Holden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye. Resolution passed.
Permit the participation to make the necessary arrangements with property.com to all checking out the property possession of the lease department. Amendment to resolution adopted September 25, 2012, awarding the contract Rico USA Inc. with leasing of new photocopiers, specifically to include the language and replacement photocopiers and for paying existing leased photocopiers in add state contract number 82709. Authorize the wooden contract to continental fire and safety for the purchase of one oxygen-contained bill station cascade system for the ambulance service area of the fire department. for the ambulance service bureau of the fire department in the amount of sixty-three thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars. Authorize the establishment of salary committee to reduce salaries of non-represented employees of the city. Authorize the tax collector to cancel refund credit, no fulfillment of taxes on the property located at one oh five one oh nine First Street for tax year two thousand eleven in total amount of fifteen thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars four cents. Determine that the City of Elizabeth foreclosed by summary proceedings in Graham as provided in the Graham Four Quotient Act, the taxable certificates held by the city as delineated by the tax collector. Authorize the property officials to execute a new agreement for emergency shelter grant funding proceeding thirty-eight year two thousand twelve in non-proper agencies listed on Schedule A on file in City Court's office in the application amount of one hundred sixty-one thousand six hundred thirty-three dollars. Authorize the property officials to renew tax payment agreement with the assigned owner, C I S Oakwood L L. See the Owo Plaza for the lending of the new housing and mortgage mortgage agency loan. Authorize postponement to mortgage yourself to the property located at fourteen sixty-four, fourteen sixty-five, eleven ten Place. Authorize the property officials to execute all necessary documents to discharge a senior disabled owner occupied deferred payment loan second mortgage out of the city on the property located at sixty-three sixty-five Erie Street. Authorize property officials to execute all documents necessary to provide an owner occupied basic deferred payment loan to near williams on property located at five sixteen five eighteen Versailles Drive in an amount not exceeding nineteen thousand dollars. Authorize the awarded contract to Magic Touch Construction Company, Keepware in Jersey for repair and maintenance of the plumbing systems and batteries sitting on Owo buildings for a two-year period in amount of six hundred nine thousand four hundred twenty dollars. Establish needs for the moving disposal of debris on properties listed on Schedule A on file in the City Court's office in total amount of eight thousand nine hundred forty dollars seventy-four cents. Establish needs for the forty other properties listed on Schedule A on file in the City Court's office in total amount of two thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars ninety cents. Authorize the awarded contract to Hatch Hopping Donald, no permanent duty, by civil engineering design services on a reversal basis for time sentences in connection with the property, a superfluous lien, and an estimated worth of six thousand five hundred dollars.
You've heard the reading of the resolution, what is your question?
Your request, President.
Move this second, are there any comments? Mr. President, Councilman Keenan.
With regard to C I S, the residents have been coming, Owo Plaza's been coming regularly to these meetings. They have been giving releases. The owner of C I S came to us a couple of months ago and outlined a somewhat rosy picture of how the tenants A, were being listened to, and B, how their problems were being resolved. That clearly is not the case. If it were the case, I don't think you would have this continual presentation by the tenants of their issues. I think it was a great idea to have managers here tonight, but as they indicated, they really had no right responsibility for Owo Plaza. We should not be in a position to be property managers for C I S. That is, when people have problems, if they come to city council for resolution of those problems, they should be going to C I S. I've got two recommendations. One, to follow up with your invitation to C I S to come to a meeting in November, they should probably come to the regular meetings so that we can accommodate more residents. And number two, we need to strongly encourage C I S, open the lines of communications with the residents, keep those lines of communications open, have regular meetings, have a mechanism for them to be property managers so that as these specific problems come up, whether it's plumbing, whether it's debris, whatever it is, then the proper party is handling those complaints, and that is C I S. We have a commitment to hearing from our residents, we do that, that's great, but let's, we're extending this debate to this pilot to C I S, plus asking them something in return, only to listen to the residents, try to resolve their problems to the extent possible, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Yes, as was requested by the councillor of Owo, I'd like to go and invite them again, C I S, to come before this body, address, you know, where they are, what's going on over at Oakwood. As far as this resolution is concerned, this is, unfortunately, it's necessary in order for them to be able to move forward with the project of rehabilitating the three fifty and three eighty, you know, buildings. So unfortunately, M J M F A requires them, you know, to have it, to be able to fight themselves. But yeah, they will be invited to come, you know, once again to the meeting. And I thought we were the impression that they were going to have regular meetings, I don't know what happened to that. I haven't heard of any more meetings with the residents, they started to have meetings. But there was the opportunity to ask those types of questions. Councillor Mazin.
Furthermore, Mr. President, one of the meeting of the public session, if I'm not mistaken, Councilman Perkins just recommended anybody in the public from this particular project, for any complaint, to call the city clerk and give the complaint, elected to city clerk, and then we were forwarded to the bottom of the department, the construction department, right? I, for one, I would be willing to stop, wait until April, if that would be the case, just to put to the people that we are for them, but again, I don't know what the legality will be, probably have to get a random, a lot of department opinion, if we table this for residents, or city council should put a person there. We have so many people in the health department that will be focused only primarily to accept those complaints and follow those complaints from the health and city council, direct those complaints directly to the problematic, so they have an accountability in arriving. I don't trust that, okay, complaining receives them, we have to send a letter thirty days, whatever, that would be a bad system. So, we want to have those people, let's see, the mayor should be getting involved. I don't know what happened to the mayor, the mayor was one of the guy that was present at the meeting when we negotiated this thing two years ago, we approved this particular company. But the problem was, of course, I lost the election, and we lost thirty million, that was a strain to the people.
Right.
Okay, so that has to be understood also, this agency is working for only certain amount of money. I, for one, I'd be willing to have some money, a lot of people on payroll, okay? We get one person who's saying, you'll be in charge, I mean, somebody from the lot department, you care about? Turn in a lot of money aside, and then that person will virtue to people, to invite them to think that if there is a leak, if there is a leak comment, that is a reality for the winter time, there's no he, guess what? That industry should be doing the work for the city, for the councilmen, in order to cooperate with agency, so they all come together and be able to help them out.
Yeah, councillor, we do, as I said, the clerk she takes the notes, and we do forward any specific complaints to the appropriate department to follow up with. And I am hopeful, like I said, with future meetings, that the administration will be sending the directors that I have asked for them to come to this meeting, so we can have them answer some of those important questions.
Mr. President, I think you were right, you know what happened? I had some former, one of my former students, within the audience, and they know what Mr. Mazin is all about. I care for everybody, okay? So, I know they get here from day one, remember, they, they come in and told your councilman this and that, and I says, words that they don't bring thoughts, words could be said, just to shut side. If you're conscious of this, do that thing, my conscience is clear. God bless Mr. Mazin, God bless us, but we definitely, definitely somebody is going to follow through all those complaints. If I, I might ask the city clerk, any complaint that you have so far?
Maybe you got four.
Four, thank you. And just one more, just so you'll know, I understand, the health department has at least one inspector that's pretty much assigned to it, and maybe even a second one, so. Well, I can tell you that the, the audience I was in tonight, they also heard that that we have one person assigned from the health department, steady for that particular project, that that person does the job totally and efficient, I know for sure, and I hope, Mr. President. Thank you very much, and you also, Perkins Dusty.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I do agree with my colleague, councillor Mazin, that we should have one point person from the administration, whether it be a health, or inspector, whoever, we should have one point person going forward to make sure that all the concerns are being addressed properly so that council would know, and if it's not, you know, we would do what we need to do to make sure. But I do not agree with my colleague who says table this item that's on tonight, because that's the problem with the whole situation, money and commitment was pulled back, which creates problems. Now, I believe they're trying to go forward to find funding and put mechanisms in place so that the funding is there, so we need to try to work with them, and that, but also, we need to make sure that there's some total responsibility to us as a council body, that we know when we call someone in the administration, they can say, there were twenty complaints this week, and six of them, or seven or eight have been handled, and so and so, we worked on. I think we need that at this place and time, to make sure going into the winter months, that things just can go awry for the residents in that area. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor. Any other comments?
I agree with, you know, the suggestions that are being made by both my council colleagues, and we'll send forward some of the administration requests in the city to identify one person and help coordinate the needs of the residents in Owo, and allow us also to have somebody that we can contact directly, who would know what's going on with the destruction, what's going on with the health, what's going on, you know, with housing issues over at Owo Plaza.
Seeing none, councillor, go.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilman Broden.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Stedden.
Aye.
Councilman Baldwin.
Aye.
Councilman Mazin.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye. Your orders passed.
Authorize award contract to Hatch Hopping Donald, Burke, Jersey, providing civil engineering and design services in connection with the remediation of commodity storage room, Ofo point zero zero two, it was seventy-two, thirty-five thousand dollars, establishing compartment spaces in front of the premises located at three fifty-one Jersey Avenue, three sixty-four Jersey Street, nine seventy-eight Grove Street, nine eighty-five Edgewood Road, six forty-one First Avenue, ten twelve North Avenue. Delete the following handicap parking spaces from in front of the premises located at seven twenty-seven Bamburin Avenue, twenty-eight Catherine Street, ten sixty-eight South Hallmore Avenue, nine fifty-five Loop Street, seven seventeen Clarks Avenue. Recent resolution adopted September twentieth, two thousand twelve, establishing handicap parking space from in front of the premises located at five sixty-four Jefferson Avenue, specifically to make same unique parking space, handicap parking space. Authorize seven, the work of compensation litigation error of Goodt Office versus the City of Elizabeth in total amount of seventy-three thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars.
You've heard the reading of the resolution, what is your question? Your request, President. Move this second, are there any comments? Seeing none, go.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilman Broden.
Stayed on the topic, I, I.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Stedden. Councilman Baldwin.
Aye.
Councilman Mazin.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye. Your orders passed.
Pay utility bills, complete your rental licenses.
You've heard the reading of the resolution, what is your question?
Your request, President.
Move this second, are there any comments? Seeing none, go.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilman Broden.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan. Councilman Stedden.
Aye.
Councilman Baldwin.
Aye.
Councilman Mazin.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye. Your orders passed. Commendations, Sean McLean, United Council, Anthony Tong, running of the Irish Irish Society Union, Kathy Moonan O'Tanga, of the Irish Irish Society Union. Are there any other commendations?
Mr. President, Councilman Mazin. I would like to recommend a show for the contract of being marked for sixty-five years anniversary in Peterstown section of Elizabeth. I will give you information to the city clerk tomorrow.
Are there any other commendations?
Memorials, we have Detective William Leslie, the Judge of State parole officer, Vero Sakaya, and Elia Tapoche, if I'm pronouncing this correctly, and Fiora Verini, Dolores Lolo, King's dad, Elizabeth Councilwoman, Carmela Chilchileo, Blaze Ilapu, former director of public works. I also like to add that there are, there are many of the old ones.
Yes, I like to add, Rosalina Montonado. Rosalina passed away yesterday for a river, possibly never, never. Our son is quite popular in the, in the community, our son is a, a Semanado photo, who is a very popular DJ, and he has a radio rock obsession, a Canadian version. Very, councillor. Any other remarks?
I just wanted to, to comment.
Yes.
Councilman Broden, he's been a service to the city for many, many years, and I was sad this morning that everybody passed, and that's why I just said, because I will be here for the service of, for the service of, for myself, my family, my relatives, my family.
Thanks, councillor. Any other remarks?
I just would like to add, if anybody's aware, it's the Mason Files of ordinance, and I just would like to remember all the things about the Mason Files. Please stand for all the signs.
Motion for adjournment. So, meeting adjourned.